Let's bring this, now that we've established quorum, it's 12:23. Let's call this meeting to order. SJ, so our process is, we're going to go through the survey items and items that we have, we're all on the same page, will adopt at the end of this meeting. Items that we have discussion. After this meeting, a question will be sent out of the positions of all those committee members that we couldn't come to a consensus. And based off of if we are able to establish a 50% plus one on that questionnaire that's sent out right there, we'll adopt those positions as well. And as far as there was, Diana had asked, if it'd be appropriate, there was two surveys So what we, to accommodate in comments, if there was comments that reflected, your vote would potentially change based off of the weather condition, one being O and M and one being a large snowstorm event, we could put that in as a comment. But we are still going to be answering the specific questions as we go. Are there any questions?
So Matt, for this meeting, as is, our quorum is six and met, so to get a majority, we would need four of the six, correct?
Thank you, Diana. Are there any other questions before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move to our first item. Major shipping lanes and freight cargo transport. So there's five different choices, and this will be similar to the next couple of questions, but it's rated from not important, low importance, moderate importance, high importance, and critical importance. Christine?
Oh, yeah. You might have been, you might be asking me to do what I was gonna ask that we do first.
I was gonna ask if you'd do a roll call.
Yep. Well, just for the meeting, we haven't done an official roll call for the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Matt Kirkshank?
Present.
Don Scudder?
Present.
SJ Klein?
Present.
B. Horn said that he could not make this meeting, it's accused absence. Diana Evans?
Present.
Mike Graberg?
Present.
Mike Fenster?
Here.
Bruce Bustamante? I believe is absent. Debbie Rinkie is absent. Bob French? I believe he is absent. And Jim Winchester also absent.
Okay, so that, so this is the priority for major shipping lanes and freight cargo transport. So it's rated from not important, low importance, moderate importance, high importance, and critical importance. So with that, Christina, will you just, do you mind doing a roll call for each individual when we go through these questions?
Oh, sure. Okay, so you'd like to be last? Mike Fenster? Mike Graberg? SJ Klein?
Yeah, I agree with critical.
And Scudder? And Matt Kirkshank?
Okay, so now for our, I think we all heard that, that was unanimous. So we've adopted critical for major shipping lanes and freight cargo transport. Next will be access to other modes of transportation, airports, and marine ports, harbors. And again, it's not important, low importance, moderate importance, high importance, and critical importance. Christina?
Mike Fenster?
Critical.
Mike Graberg?
Critical.
Diana Evans? SJ Klein?
I agree with moderate, if we're gonna have discussion.
Don Scudder? What was your vote?
It was hi.
Hi, thank you. And Matt Kirkshank? Okay, so we don't have consensus.
So we're gonna move on to the next item, just to keep the meeting going. So this will be one that goes out to the committee, and we will vote on it at a later point. Our next is speed limit of road. Higher speeds require more frequent attention to avoid safety issue. So not important, low important, moderate importance, high importance, and critical importance. Christine?
This is SJ, I did have a question about that one, if I may.
Sure.
Speed limit of roads isn't, isn't clear to me. Are we talking about managing the speed smartly? Are we talking about lowering speeds? Are we talking about raising speeds?
So we happen to have Sean Baskey in here. Is that one you'd mind taking up, Sean?
Sure. My guess is, is that this is probably talking about the existing speed limit of the roadway, not about changing the speeds. And so, you know, as if, for instance, maybe the Seward Highway is 55 miles an hour, and, you know, a collector road in, you know, in another area might be 35 or 45.
So you're saying that the Seward Highway would get more frequent maintenance than the collector roads, is that correct?
I'm, I'm just trying to interpret as well as you, but that would be my guess, is that, you know, how, how does the speed limit of the roadway play into the importance of it?
Thank you.
SJ, does that satisfy?
I guess, so.
So SJ?
Again, just to be, basically, high priority would mean that we were giving higher priority to higher speed roads in thing, in maintenance and snow clearing, is that basically what we're saying? Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Christina?
Mike Fenster?
Moderate.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
SJ Klein?
Moderate.
Don Scudder?
Moderate.
And Matt Kirkshank?
This, this is one where I would give a higher rating in a non-storm situation.
And that's a good comment that we should, we hit in there, make sure we include. Okay, moving to our next is road characteristics, grade, surface condition, curves adjacent, localized conditions such as fog. So I think it's saying, giving a higher, please correct me if I'm wrong, road, giving a higher rating for areas with maybe a steep grade, high curves, rating those as higher priority areas. Are there any questions before we vote? Hearing none. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Moderate.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
There we go. Hey, we're, I've got poor, poor voice access to the call, but moderate. I'm gonna answer the rest of my questions on chat.
Okay. Don Scudder?
Moderate.
And Matt Kirkshank?
So I think majority has spoken right there.
This is another where I would give higher priority in a non-storm event.
Good point, Diana. So our next one will be existing Department of Transportation Public Facility Resources equipment are experience and slash condition and location dependent. So I would like clarify, is there anyone with, from DOT that would feel comfortable to give further clarification on this one?
So, this is James, starts it. What clarification do you need?
So this is, will you explain further existing DOT and PFP resources?
You know, I can't, I can't tell you what the designer of this survey was intending. I can only try to interpret it as best as anybody could. But if what you're asking is a, is a ask of the survey designer, what they're meaning, I can certainly do that for you.
Yeah, if you have that resource available, because I, this is enough of a gray territory one, I, I don't know how other committee members feel. Is this one we would like further clarification, and we can keep moving and come back to?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This is Mike Graberg, I don't think I need more clarification.
Mike, you said you don't need more clarification?
No.
Are there any other committee members wishing to request additional information? So I would like to hear additional more information, we'll move on. If we don't hear back, we'll just take a vote where it's. So our next one is bridges and rivers, rating from not important, low importance, moderate importance, high importance, and critical importance. This is giving a higher priority to bridges and rivers. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
High priority.
Mike Graberg?
Hi.
Did you say hi?
Yeah.
Thank you. Diana Evans?
Hello.
Sorry, I will look at his chat. SJ said hi. Don Scudder?
Hi.
And Matt Kirkshank?
Hi.
You said hi?
So I think we had, I think we had that. I think we had enough support on that one, that will be, yep. So our next one will be type of road, parentheses, major or minor highway, material, collector, local road, and basing off of, I'm assuming, the more major of, major roads would take a higher priority versus local roads. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Are you trying to stack the vote?
Mike Graberg?
Pepperbrook, moderate.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
SJ Klein? It says moderate. Don Scudder?
Moderate.
And Matt Kirkshank? Majority is moderate.
Okay, our next question is annual average of daily traffic. I think it's self-explanatory, the more traffic, the higher the priority. I should give a chance to, are there any questions for clarification on this one? Hearing none, Christine?
Mike Fenster, we can't hear you, you might have muted yourself.
Yes, I put that as low because it's an annual average, and I don't think that necessarily reflects winter or during snowstorms.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
SJ Klein? Oh, sorry, you said hi. Don Scudder?
Moderate.
And Matt Kirkshank?
So I think we'll be hearing about that question?
Yes.
I think, yeah. So our next will be weather events. Examples are type, severity, and impact to condition. The example is freezing rain. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Critical.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Critical.
SJ says critical. Don Scudder?
Critical.
And Matt Kirkshank?
Critical.
Critical, the majority.
So our next one will be alternatives, emergency routes. Again, in parentheses, it's evacuation routes for any community, traffic congestion, alter, alternative routes for larger population areas. Any questions? Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Hi.
Mike Graberg?
Hi.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
SJ Klein? He said hi. Don Scudder?
Hi.
Matt Kirkshank?
Hi.
Okay. Majority said hi.
Our next one will be population density of surrounding connected area, potential increased utilization of route for both motorized and non-motorized user. I'm gonna read that one again. Population density of surrounding concentrated area. So I, correct me if my interpretation is, this is higher priority for higher density Is there any disagreement with that? Is that something we should get more clarification, or are we comfortable to move forward with that one?
You had said surrounding, concentrated, it's surrounding and connected.
Oh, thank you. That's what I get for playing off my phone here.
You're fine.
So population density of surrounding connected area, potential increased utilization for route for both motorized and non-motorized users. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Critical.
Mike Graberg?
Critical.
Diana Evans?
Critical.
SJ Klein says hi. Don Scudder?
Or, critical.
And Matt Kirkshank?
Critical.
SJ changed to critical.
Thank you, SJ is changing to critical, and the majority unanimous was critical.
Perfect. Our next will be school bus routing, parentheses, district-specific, and seasonal considerations. Are there any questions? Christine?
I would possibly comment on this one. Is, is one aspect that it's connected to is school bus, no clearing in neighborhoods, because when you clear the, the arterials, it doesn't necessarily mean that school bus service is gonna improve.
Thank you, Diana. Are there any other comments?
John Scudder, I agree with Diana.
So just, I, I wanna pause for a second. When we get to comments, that'd be a great place to put comments in, but because I really haven't opened up for comments for all these, I appreciate what you said, Diana, but I would like to keep the same format for doing all these. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Hi.
Mike Graberg?
Hi.
Diana Evans?
Moderate.
SJ Klein? And school bus, hi. Don Scudder?
Hi.
And Matt Kirkshank? Unanimous, or majority, hi.
Perfect. Distance from maintenance and operation stations that Department of Transportation Public Facility staff must travel for work. So distance from MNO stations, so is it important, the distance that staff travel? Is there any other interpretations of this one? I'm assuming, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, 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 I interpreted this as, as important to me as the citizen, so that's where I took it.
So I do see the DOT MPF staff must travel, so kind of the way I was considering that one was, let's say you have the plow operator that lives in Anchorage, but you're going to be sending him out to Birchwood to go to that station to pick up equipment. Distance from MNO station that the DOT PF staff must travel for work. Would you prefer, is it a higher importance to have staff that live out in that area for a quicker response time?
Matt, I think their meaning is it factors into the priority of your clearing, not in the priority of where the person lives.
Stations that the DOT person must travel.
And I read it as possibly they might have to pay overtime for the person to get to a further away maintenance and operations station.
Okay, I would like to have clarification for this one, please. James, is there any way, so I can't see the chat right now, is there any way we can get clarification on this one, please?
Will do, and that's the distance from MNO station.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our next one is route and segment access, operator, operator catches area along the way due to efficiency. Go ahead.
Mike Fenster?
Moderate.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Hello. And this is one I would put a higher priority in a non-storm event.
SJ is, SJ, we are on the next one. I'll come back to you, John Scudder?
Moderate.
Matt Kirkshank? Route segment, SJ has said low, but we have four moderates, so majority is moderate.
So our next one is gonna be reliable access for emergency responders in hospitals, parentheses, speed of emergency services. Any questions? Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Critical.
Mike Graberg?
Critical.
Diana Evans? Don Scudder?
Critical.
Matt Kirkshank?
Critical.
And SJ, we don't, I think he's typing right now. Critical is what SJ says, so. Critical has it?
Okay, so our next one will be public transit system, parentheses, bus routes. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Hi.
Mike Graberg?
Hi.
Diana Evans? SJ is saying hi. Don Scudder?
Hi.
And Matt Kirkshank? Unanimous, hi.
So our next one is safety corridors. So parentheses designated for enhanced safety due to accident data, so are we giving a higher priority to safety corridors? Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Hi.
Mike Graberg?
Moderate.
Diana Evans?
Moderate. This is one I'd have higher in non-storm situation.
SJ is saying hi. Don Scudder?
Hi.
And Matt Kirkshank? Majority was high.
So our next one will be presence of non-motorized facilities, bike lanes, sidewalks, pathways, and pedestrian over crosses. Christine?
Mike Fenster?
Critical.
Mike Graberg?
Critical.
Diana Evans?
Critical.
SJ is saying hi. Don Scudder?
Critical.
SJ's changed his to critical. And Matt Kirkshank?
Critical. Okay. So our next one will be, we're changing pace now, so now it's open to comments, and the first one is any road priority criteria missing. If you see criteria not listed above for ranking that should be taken into account, let us know what that is and what you believe is should be added, what should be added to this list.
One thing I put on there was that a coordinated timing with the plowing and clearing of adjacent and connected pedestrian and cycling paths. It seems that there's not any coordination going on there to keep from having to replow pedestrians after they've already been done.
And are you saying that here too, I'm assuming, as a comment for the CAC?
Well, it's what I put on my personal one, and I think it's something that they overlooked.
Okay. Are there any objections to adding that comment? Hearing no objections, that comment's added. Diana?
I have three.
You have three? And do you, is this the best pla, is this where you'd like to put all three of those comments?
No, this, this is the, a No, this, this is the additional criteria. I believe they may have mentioned access to Jay Bear, National Highway System routes, and employment centers as part of their priority criteria.
Are there any objections to adopting those added criteria? Hearing none, they're adopted. Do we have any other comments? So I, I will say, I think Diana did hit on a real big point. I don't know where we should put it in, but I just want to make this, these criteria, the criteria you have could be two different rankings. One for if we have a major snow event and there could be a criteria versus regular and both those numbers could change. So it'd be, I don't know where that could be put, but I thought that was a very valuable comment that it's hard to capture the metrics because we don't know what we're specifically talking about, a major event or just the regular day-to-day operations.
I'd be fine with putting it there. I was kind of thinking, they had the one last comment, any additional input, but we could put it there too and say, for example, speed limits of roads.
No, Diana, I think that was good. When we do the very last one, that is a kind of ambiguous, great spot to put it, that's a good call.
Okay.
So our next one, do we have any other comments before I move on? Hearing none? Opinion, Department of Transportation, public facility, road maintenance in your area. Positives.
I had put one down on my personal one, but they do seem to work at the best times of day to prevent conflicts with daily traffic.
Are there any objections to adopting that comment? The comments added? Additional comments? I'll move to the next one. Opinion, DOT PF, road maintenance in your area, DOT MPF improvements. From your perspective, what can Department of Transportation and public facilities do better if resources allow for improved winter road maintenance? So if there was funding available, what could be done better? So I'll make a comment of additional staffing, additional equipment.
I added that I think they could do a little bit more publicity about how their priorities may have shifted at a, for a given storm or a given time period.
Are there any obje, I apologize. Were there any objections to adopting my comments?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I just totally skipped over that. I need to make sure that.
I would add the increased awareness, which sort of aligns with his. I think that, uh, that the, evident from current events that awareness of the community is lacking.
So just before we get too far, are there any objections to adding all those comments? Hearing none, all those comments are added. Okay, John, do you have any more to add?
Um, I, I, and maybe DOT could chime in on this one, but I feel like there, the plant of the, of the question is wrong is like, I think they should be trying to lobby for more resources with the legislature. And I don't know if they have that capability or if they've been unsuccessful, but I think using your priority based on very limited resources is a backwards way of, of trying to keep us all moving.
Good point, Diana.
So I, I do wonder on this one of, if you know what the, if you know what could be done better and what the priorities are, what changes could be done, then you could ask for additional resources. So by the public weighing in of, these are the things they want better, it probably gives support to the additional resources.
And based on our survey, look at how many items we, we feel are critical or high. And I don't think those needs are being met to that level.
Are there any objections to adopting? That, that was a comment, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Yep, no objection to adopting those comments. Okay, hearing none. And I'd add one other one is attrition. You know, I think, I can always tell when we have a new operator that's plowing in our area and I think it's very important to have, when we have the same operators, we're able to keep them, I think you have a much higher level of service. So working on attrition and some, or I don't know what the, working on keeping the same people, so whatever it takes to do that. Are there any objections to adding that comment? Hearing none, are there any more we'd like to add before we move on? I think we're, we're sticking a lot of our comments under one or two of these sections is kind of what I'm gathering.
There is one comment in the chat from Sean Baskey, who said he could share input if you would like.
Uh, yes, I think our committee would love to share the input. I think that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, please.
Sure, and it was just res, in a response to Diana, she asked, you know, maybe DOT could speak up if, about lobbying. And so, you know, our role is to report to the legislature what it is we can do with the resources that are provided to us or the funding that it's provided to us. They pose questions to us about budget cuts and, you know, what the impacts would be to communities. They also pose the, the other way, not, not as often. And so our, our role is to report what, what it is that we can do for the communities, not generally for, you know, we, we can't go and lobby, I guess, as, as state employees to the legislators. We can on our own time, but not.
And I kind of figured that and that's why I started thinking about this letter that I'd like to do.
I'll, I'll tell you that everybody at the department would love to serve the community in a lot of different ways and, and, and better, but, but that's me speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the department.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. So with that, we'll move, so I make sure I got this one. So we just did positives, now we did, oh, improvements. So now it'd be any additional input or comments you would like to give specifically about road maintenance priorities? So is this where, Diana, we'd have the, a comment we talked about of, there's two really sample situations here, the critical event and our priorities related to that and the normal day-to-day maintenance and operations.
Yeah, that's right.
Are there any objections to that?
We could give a couple of examples of, of those that, that we think fall in that category to, to help maybe with their interpretation.
That's a good idea. I'm assuming you have some examples?
Yeah, such as the speed limit of the road, priority for plowing, the road characteristics, uh, priori, priority, I think there was one other one. Uh, route and segment access for operator catching an area along the way due to efficiency. I had a couple others, but we gave them a high priority as a group, so high, a fairly high priority as a group, so I don't think in those cases we would have elevated the priority for routine maintenance.
Perfect. Are there any objections to adopting those examples and comments that Diana had? Hearing none, those are adopted. Do we have any additional comments? And with that, I think that concludes, away to summary.
Just one point, Matt, if, I don't know if James quickly did his research on number five and for existing conditions and distance, if there's any new information that would help you guys vote on those two?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I have reached out to the folks that disseminated this, this survey, but I've not gotten a response.
No worries. We appreciate you even making the attempt, James. Thank you.
I'm not sure on the existing DOT resources one, but I could take a crack at the, at the other one.
So which one are we talking about? So we're all on the same page here.
Distance of MNO station to DOT PF staff must travel for work.
Perfect. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, so my guess is, is that, you know, so we've got, we've got a station here in Anchorage, right? And then, and so let's just say that there's a, a section of road out in Indian, right? That is a, a lower priority than, or is a higher priority than one here in Anchorage. And so they would have to travel for half an hour to get to that specific spot. Then would you then send that, that operator out to Indian because it's a higher priority, bypassing and, and not doing some of the lower priority routes here? As an example, I'm, you know, obviously it's, it, this is a statewide survey, so it's hard to apply everything in, in every area. But there's, there's long distances that they might have to travel to get to higher priority routes.
Sean, related to, go ahead.
Well, and then there was the other question that said, you know, do you drop the plow while you're heading out there to Indian as a, for instance? Not that we wouldn't on the Seward Highway, but you know, again, it's hard to apply all these to specific routes.
Related to that, Sean, if I can, when I looked at the map, for instance, say the Glen Highway between Anchorage and Wasilla or Palmer, why are, why are the priorities different in different sections there? I think you would just sort of make sure people can get from the valley into Anchorage and back. Would they just raise the blades in those sections that are lower priority or how does that work if you even know?
Um, I have to go look at the map to see specifically where you're talking about. So like Anchorage covers all the way, Anchorage Station covers from Indian or Bird all the way out to the Kinnick Flats. So that's, that's right. So at the Kinnick Flats, it may change for the Palmer Station, as for instance.
But there's even sections like near Birchwood or near, oh, I don't know, Clutna that are still within the Muni and thereby AMAT's consideration that are, some are green and some are yellow on the Glen Highway.
So this is Jessie. I was looking at that the other day and I think that might actually be the parts of the highway you used to get off into town, Inigo River here.
Mm-hmm.
And then get back on again. So not like the main highway itself, if that helps at all.
Thank you.
So are we comfortable voting on this one? Distance from MNO stations that DOT PF staff must travel for work. So hearing no objections right there. Christine?
Just looking at the time, it's 1:08, the meeting technically ended at 1:00. Do you need to vote to extend it to?
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes? That gives us seven more minutes.
Move to extend.
Bye.
Okay, are there any objections to extending? Hearing none, we're extended. Thank you, Christine. You want to take the vote, Christine?
Sure. Mike Fenster?
Low.
Mike Rayberg?
Moderate.
Diane Evans?
Not important.
John Scudder?
Low.
Matt Kurtshank?
Moderate.
And S J has said low.
Mine's low.
And low.
Mike Rayberg is below.
Low is a consensus.
Okay, so with that, we've answered the ones that we've got clarification on. If no one objects, if we get clarification on that last one, Christine, could you include that clarification? We can vote on that as well?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, and with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Perfect. Okay, thank you everyone and have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get that question out soon. Thank you, Christine, for all your help.
Thank you, you guys. Stay safe.